We'll now call to order the November seventh, two thousand sixteen meeting of the Richmond Public School Board. Now, if you'll call the board, please.
The board members present with their families, the warrior.
Here.
Mr. Coleman.
Here.
Mrs. Taylor, Mrs. Sarah Alhama, Dr. Jones, Mrs. Cadyett.
Here.
Mrs. Larson, Mr. Coleman.
Here.
You do not have a tail on this issue. We have been joined by our students to see Justin.
Board members in the audience, at this time I'd like to recognize November's student, representative of the school board. Student is Justin Gate, a senior at Armstrong High School. His goal is to make the most out of his final year of high school by applying for colleges, scholarships, and being a great student. He ran from the class, from the class office and wanted the position of senior class president. Ran because he wanted to create a positive environment for Armstrong High School. He is considered to be more active, seeing more positivity in after-school activities and getting more students in their classes on time this year. He said no school is perfect, but he's doing his part and working hard to make it better and working with staff and other students at the school. He said he would like to thank all persons who have made this opportunity possible. And he's proud to serve as Armstrong student representatives of the school board and the month of November. Ladies and gentlemen, Justin Gate.
Mrs. Taylor, have you been to reflect you've been joined by Mrs. Larson.
Thank you. Before you, are the students' parents, principal, family members here tonight with? Please stand. Principal. Thank you so much for sharing with us. Please join.
Board members, members of the Richmond Public School Board. Just take a moment from seeing any translators and students. Mission number work in school sometimes more than two dozen translators. Give back the paper of the population here originally. That will continue for, I'll make my usual announcement. SBI, I mean, the Spanish, if I know, say the language for here was the translation of Spanish. It sounds like he brought it here.
Thank you. Board members and members of the public who've joined us. And I do want to just take a minute to acknowledge some of the great things that are going on with our schools. For those of you who don't know, the John Marshall High School marching band, the joint pride of Northside, Mr. Coleman. Was presented with the opportunity to play as the city of Richmond and the state of Virginia welcome home Senator Tim Kanning and his wife. As he prepares for Election Day. And perhaps become the next vice president of the United States. So it is truly a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for those students. But I would also be remiss if I did not acknowledge on behalf of the board. The hard work and dedication that's gone into the football season for not, for all of our teams, but in particular. Two teams who have made the playoffs and will play this weekend. The team at Thomas Jefferson will play Friday night. They will play at Wrightsville, which is in Northern Virginia. And Miss S, as you well know, George With will travel to James Monroe also on Friday night. And so, please keep Thomas Jefferson and George With in your thoughts and well wishes as they embark upon a playoff run. And having said that, now, the next item on the agenda.
Next item on the agenda is item two, ready missions. MedFirst.
Mr. Chairman and board members in the audience, at this time, we'd like to recognize MedFest. MedFest was an accredited offer of physical exam that all athletes need prior to participating in the Special Olympics sports program. It is sometimes the first exposure that these athletes have to, to medical care. In many cases, life-threatening conditions have been found and subsequently treated thanks to MedFest. Led by volunteer physicians, nurses, physician assistants, medical students. The MedFest screening consists of the following stations. Medical history, height and weight, blood pressure, cardiology test, muscle skeletal test, orthopedic test, abdominal evaluation, and checkout station. Special Olympics of Virginia has been conducted by MedFest for Richmond Public Schools system for the past three years. Only five hundred free examinations have been provided for students in Richmond Public Schools. And at times several students have been identified with significant health issues and are now under the care and treatment of medical professionals as a result of this partnership. And at that time, several students have been, in October, they've been along, thirty percent of the students were identified as having some immediate need for dental care also. Special Olympics Virginia and their partners are working on finding free treatment options for these students as a partner. With Richmond Public Schools, VCU, for a free dental clinic offer each year. The Special Olympics Virginia Summer Games in Richmond, Virginia. Special Olympics, Special Olympics Virginia is dedicated to continuing to provide resources to Richmond Public Schools. Since inception of the ERV initiative in nineteen ninety-eight, Special Olympics of Virginia has contributed over two million dollars in supplies and resources. We also, to the MedFest group, before we recognize you, were asked to share thanks from a couple of our employees who could not be here tonight. I'm trying to make sure. From Ms. Gloria St. George and Special Ed Education Teacher Elkar Thompson. And ladies and gentlemen, paraphrasing, as they're just like that, paraphrasing through that. They wanted to, could not attend the council meeting, they wanted to extend a thank you for Special Olympics of Virginia for supporting students in Richmond Public Schools. And for her class, Elkar Thompson Middle School. Unfortunately, Elkar Thompson Middle School were having grant teaching conference this evening, which is why they could not be here. I fear I will not be able to make it in time. So through this notice, she wanted to thank Mr. Floyd Miller and Ms. Pam Mize for making sure all of the students received a complete physical. And that they're able to participate in the Special Olympics VA activities during the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen school year. There's more to that. And that's from Mr. Coleman. We also received a thank you from Tracy Howard, another exceptional education teacher. She says they need to world to her and her colleagues and most of all the students and their parents. The various activities afford her students and the students of their schools opportunity to participate and be successful in various sports such as bowling, basketball, and learning how not to be afraid of the water and become a successful swimmer. There's more to this, and I'll pass it to the clerk, and then we should attach them also to that director. So that anyone can see the full exposure of the thank you messages. Take the time.
Yes, absolutely. I just want to echo all of what Dr. Benham said. Much of the stuff that he just recited and acknowledged would not be possible without partners like MedFirst. And so, on behalf of the board, we say thank you, thank you, thank you. And I think we've gotten some recognition for themselves. The folks from MedFirst, MedFest, they come up.
That's, that's.
That's, I'm sorry. Like they had Dr. Carter.
Mr. Born and the rest of the board members present. On behalf of here's a list, and if you come up when I call your name. Oh, please say it. Please say it. When I call your name, please forgive me if I don't say it correctly. Caroline Zekor, a student of VCU School District. We have Mary Tonerelli. Director of outpatient and ancillary services, Shrewd Hospital of Richmond and VCU. David Holwowski, Special Olympics Virginia Vice President of Program. Pam Mize, Special Olympics Virginia, young athletes and unified schools coordinator for the ERV Program. Floyd Miller, ERV Program Director, Special Olympics Virginia. Ali Kenyari, Chief Resident Medical College of Virginia.
Are you ready? One, two, three.
Thank you. Mr. Coleman.
Mr. Chairman, I had the fine opportunity to attend the MedFest event. It was amazing, amazing. To see our students really get quality treatment. But I'd be honored to acknowledge is our transportation department took a lot of coordination to get the kids to the event. And now, we also, just to see everybody invested and make that happen was really tremendous. And thank you all so much.
I just want to echo what everybody said. I had an opportunity to come to the event as well. And I was also really proud of our students because I thought they were, you know, there were lines to stand in and I had to wait, although it wasn't a long time. And, and I thought they were great. Couple of them myself were a little scared of, you know, doing the dental stuff. And the folks working with them were so fabulous. And it's been like a win-win on both sides. Our, our children have got these amazing services. And then we had the Med students there who were able to learn and experience as well. So, thank you so much.
Anything else? Who says?
Yeah.
Certainly appreciate your presence. Next item on the agenda.
The next item is item three, public information. Do not have anyone sign up in advance.
Okay. If they're not having anyone to sign up in advance, it's not a barrier to you offering public comment consistent with our policy and practice. If you do have public comment, I'd ask that you please line up in the center aisle here. Whoever's first can jump up to the mic. And we have just a few, few housekeeping rules. One, state your name for the record and sign in. Two, we ask that you refrain from using profanity or vulgarity. Three, entrench your comments to the board. No solicitations, no selling products that are illegal at campaign, so on and so forth. No laws. If you're representing yourself, you have three minutes. If you're representing a group, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Richmond Public Schools Board. My name is Lorraine Wright. I am an organizational member of the National Dignity in Schools Campaign. And first I want to say to this young man, Justin, I appreciate you being here, sir, and I appreciate your tenacity. And just being a young black man, number one, but overcoming the ridiculous amount of barriers that are in front of you every single day. So I applaud you and I applaud your efforts, sir. And to the school board, I want to say that I'm just so disconcerted tonight and frustrated. But I'm going to share my experience from a manifestation determination review meeting that I had the opportunity to attend today at Blackwell Elementary. And for those of you who don't know, or who are not savvy in terms of special education. A manifestation determination review basically was at the discipline or the disciplinary event in question. And determines whether or not that specific incident was a manifestation of the child's disability as reported on the IEP. So for that to happen, there have to be at least two major components or people represented in the meeting. The first one would have to be a one-on-one or behavioral specialist that has worked with the child and can speak specifically to the behaviors. The other should be some sort of psychiatric or psychologist or some sort of mental health professional that can talk to the manifestations or how this particular diagnosis exhibited, exhibits itself. So to say that when we walked into the room today and there were upwards of close to twenty people represented before the parent and the advocacy team walked in, some of which had absolutely no relevance to the proceeding itself, was not only frustrating, but disingenuous because it was either one of two things, or it might have been a combination of both. It could have been, and, you know, some sort of effort to intimidate the parent or to, you know, kind of falsely give the perception that this was a legally convened IEP team that had all of the legally required members, which it didn't. So had we not insisted that there be the behavioral specialist and a psychologist or psychiatrist, it wouldn't have happened. And nobody understood why. I'm having a problem with that. In this room, educational professionals, nobody understood that for a manifestation determination meeting, and I'm a mental health professional, so I understand that. But nobody in the educational, on the administrative side, or the direct care side, understood that these two people should have been in the room. Not only that, there was no behavioral documentation or data to support. So what are we talking about? If we're talking about or looking at or supposed to be looking at the behaviors that were exhibited for us to have a meaningful conversation about this particular incident, but there's no behavioral data? It was told to us by an administrator, a designated administrator, that Ms. Boy or Dr. Boy said that the, now, the way that the behavioral data is to be compiled is basically in a narrative format. And guess what? Only information from October twenty-eighth on was present. When this child has had more than seventeen suspensions, suspensions in this school year alone. But when we looked at the discipline data that went back from two thousand thirteen, there was probably not even ten listed. Meanwhile, there were more than seventeen in this school year. So data wasn't accurate, documentation is missing from the file. But is this a question of confidence? I don't think so. I think everybody in the room was absolutely confident. I think this was an intentional effort again to intimidate the parent and to give the perception that this was a meaningful gathering when it couldn't possibly been. Dr. Ben, this shows a sincere lack of leadership. And sir, quite honestly disrespectful that you're on your phone or doing something electronically while I'm addressing the board because that's what you asked and you're the superintendent. It is a blatant disregard, blatant disregard on the part of Richmond Public Schools. And that's not only present or apparent by the ACOU and Just Children OCR complaint in conjunction with the NAACP. This is every single day. Let me tell you what concerned me so much more. This student in third grade, his SOL scores were advanced and proficient. Fourth grade, when he went into the self-continue setting, failed. He's not having any behavioral issues in the collaborative setting, just in the self-continue setting. So not only you guys failing students, but you're also failing staff because there were several staff members present on a consultation basis, independent contractors, as well as staff in the school that said that they had raised the red flag and said that this child should be in collaborative setting all across the board. Our PES has to do better. There's just no excuse. Our children's lives were at stake. And everybody looks like they are just so cavalier, like it just doesn't matter. This young man, he matters. And when he's going from an advanced, advanced scores to failing everything, we're pushing him into the school prison pipeline.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Ben. My name is Candace Lucas. I'm an advocate with Advocates for Equity in Schools. Today I'm here to talk about special education and corruption in public schools, specifically Richmond City Public Schools. Dr. Leonard and Dr. Ben, you must take, you must take the disciplinary action against Dr. Scott and Assistant Principal Coleman for falsifying these documents. You know they falsified it. You know they falsified the student record. They did not record suspensions on the attendance record. You know this, Dr. Leonard. This is grounds to have your license revoked as an educator. I'm an educator. And I frankly do not want educators who have the nerve to falsify the records of our most vulnerable children. I do not want those children, I do not want those individuals, I do not, I do not want those individuals to have a license under my watch. Okay? So at this point, don't pick and choose which rules you're going to follow. Follow the rules that are set to protect our children. Dr. Ben, you know they falsified the document, just like Dr. Boy falsifies documents. So the question becomes whether you're going to have the integrity to stop upholding a status quo of corruption and shut it down for children. They falsified a child's attendance record. They falsified a child's suspension record. They falsified all of this. And I gave you the pictures to document it. They were hovering over the secretary's desk falsifying documents. And they wanted to call the police on me to have me arrested because I was taking pictures of them falsifying documents? Sounds like a Freddie Gray story to me. So you continue to have these individuals in these schools, because we know this child is not the only child's record they falsified. You uphold falsification of records. That means it's an ethical issue. You uphold falsification of attendance records. That's a federal law violation. You're stating that kids are in school when they're suspended. I have the document right here, right here. They falsified it. Mr. Born, what are you going to do? You're the chairman of the board. If Mr. Ben doesn't do anything, you're, you're required to take disciplinary action against him. And every time I send you an email, you have ignored my request and you're legally obligated to do so. So why should we reelect you tomorrow when you can't protect our most vulnerable children? And you're opposing corruption, falsification of records. You're opposing through your lack of action, Dr. Mr. Born. So my question to you is, why should we elect you? So you can continue to cover up the corruption of Dr. Ben and Ms. Boy and Mr. Leonard and Dr. Scott and Assistant Principal Coleman? We don't need another, we need another person like you, like we need another hole in our head. There's no reason to reelect you, sir, unless you can be an advocate for children and protect our children from individuals who will falsify documentation against them. Because if you're falsifying documents against children with special needs, you'll do anything. I'm still trying to figure out how to separate someone who would dare to do that from anyone who would abuse children. So you have been told, I don't know how, I gave you the pictures, I even have the video. That's why I called the police on me, because I was videotaping them falsifying documentation. And Mr. Mallory back there, him giving his two cents to the police. It doesn't matter where I've been arrested at. The bottom line is that when I stand up for children, I'm willing to take the heat. Are you, Mr. Born? Because if you're not, you don't need to be on this board. We need someone who's going to stand up for children, not someone who's going to be a coward to the political system. And that's what you are, sir. You need to stand up for kids just like they're your own. If this little boy was your child, what would you do? Would you tolerate them falsifying documentation? No, you wouldn't. So you need to stand up or vote out. And, and if you feel like you, you know, you're going to get reelected again, we can always recall you as well. Because this is grounds to have a license revoked. Dr. Ben has to go. If he doesn't deal with it, Dr. Boy has to go. If she doesn't deal with it, Mr. Leonard has to go if he doesn't deal with it. They have violated the law. They have falsified fun, falsified documents. They have defrauded the federal government. And you guys are sitting here like it's nothing. And what's so sad is black people is doing this to black children. You look just like us, doing this to black children, black boys. Time's up. Time is up. So it'd be in your best interest to discipline these individuals. We will be having press conferences outside the school. We will be taking action. You need to move or move out.
The next item is that you've been joined by Mrs. Sarah Alhama.
Good evening to the board, Dr. Ben and everyone else present. Hello. I actually wanted to speak in regards to additional resources or resources that the Richmond Public School District has available. And to the parent.
Please state your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Varnecia Riggs. And I have a parent, I have a child in the Richmond Public School District. Her name is Carrieanna Fulton. She is also on the Student Advisory Council as well with Dr. Ben, and also she attends Henderson Middle School. She's a gifted student. She attends Camp Launch and every other possible avenue that's available to her that, that I make sure she can attend as far as academically. Now, I am very involved in the school as far as I am on the PTA, which I was as well last year. So I try to be as involved as I can in her academics as well as other students and seeing what resources or what can be pulled together in order to academically push them forward. However, I was trying to see if there was any way that we can possibly create a parent and student resource line. I know there's two-one-one that's available for people to get resources as far as food, clothing, shelter, things of that nature. However, I don't believe that we have one in regards to the parents and students themselves to be able to call one main hub or line in order to get resources for things that are available in the school district like food, clothing, and shelter. Her school right now is giving away food that I didn't even know was available until my daughter brought it home. So there's a lack of awareness and being able to get the resources that are available. I may not need it, but they have all this food left over, so where is it going to go? There's a grand port, so it needs to be pushed out into the city. A lot of the people that I've spoken with had no knowledge of it. There's a lot of resources like I'm saying that's available that no one may know of. There was a lack of Spanish in my daughter's school as well. She's, like I said, very gifted, tests very well, straight A student every year, no issues, very gifted. However, when she gets ready to apply for Maggie Walker Community Open High and other schools, apathetic that she's looking at go to. Spanish, and I work well with Lynn Plebich as well, the gifted, I guess she's over the gifted part for Richmond Public Schools as well. That is how I'm able to pull the resources that I need because I'm actively able to speak with these people that everyone else may not have access to or know where to go. So I know specifically because my background is business, so I'm able to kind of weed through and find out who I need to call to make things happen. Spanish wasn't available. Spanish wasn't available, therefore I was able to call Ms. Andrea Kane and get Spanish available in the school the very next day. So I'm not sure how, you know, it's definitely perhaps understandable, but I was wondering if there could be funding or funding could be found to create a one portal for parents to get resources, everything from finding out where to get community care for their children to how to apply for certain applications, everything academically and both, you know, together. So if that's possible, I would like to, as well my background, and I'm not selling anything, this call center. So I would be able to assist in being able to implement how that needs to go. Because I've spoken with everyone else and they said it's the idea that's needed. So if it's possible, I would like to see that go forward if we can manage that for the students and both the parents to get the resources that are needed. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Lorraine Jane. I'm coming to the board today because this month is going to be Special Education Month. But how can it be Special Education Month if the kids are not getting proper special education yet in Richmond Public Schools? I'm just tired of going to my son's school every day, each day, every day. I'm just tired of going to my child's school every day, each day, every day. And then what's before called the best team picking me up to come to my child's school without reaching the mercy contact first. And then the third thing is all these problems going on at my child's school and Derek Jones is not here. All these complaints, I'm sending him the complaints. Um, writing still ain't got an answer. He needs to be here to address the situation that's going on in his district. So I feel the next meeting, y'all should make him come to the meeting so he can know what's going on in his district. Let them say I didn't have. He needs to come home and come to help by the end of this month for this special education. Thank you.
How you doing, Dr. Benn and the board? Coach Fowler with John Marshall High School, a member of NFPPA, Black Coach Association, National High School Coach Association. Uh, just wanted to address the current state affairs of high school football in the city of Richmond. It's quite irritating, but I love the job and I love the kids. Uh, the consistent losing by the football teams in Richmond. At Armstrong, John Marshall, Thomas Jefferson, Hubert, and Georgetown High Schools has become a cancer to our community. The great injustice for the varsity football programs in the city has been the level of unfair competition each team has had to endure in the past season. City high schools have been forced to play against schools twice their size is beyond David versus Dela. The constant embarrassing and losing is making schools that are far from being pathetic look pathetic. Something has to give. Uh, my recommendation to that would be combining John Marshall, Georgetown, and Armstrong just for football purposes. So kids can have the opportunity to experience success, be in a more structured environment, have opportunity for better development. Uh, just this past season, uh, did a little brief research, looking at the numbers, um, the average team size for the city of Richmond high school varsity teams was twenty-one kids. The average team that you competed against was between fifty-five and seventy. Okay, and that's the width of ninth graders, tenth graders, and eleventh graders playing on one team. Uh, myself, I've coached football for seventeen years, ten in college, seven in high school. I've coached, uh, prep schools in North Carolina, formerly coached at West Shaw High School in Charlotte, North Carolina. And the development of what coaches face in Richmond is quite challenging due to the fact that the kids are at a middle school level, but they're in the eleventh grade as far as terminology, skill set, uh, understanding of game. So it's a reflection on the coaches' field to a certain extent, but it also has a lot to do with what happened before the child came into high school. And I just strongly believe that due to the nature of that, middle school football beginning possibly next year, I think it would be fair to the kids to raise self-esteem and morale to be able to win. Also bridges communities together for a short period of time. Now, I'm not asking for an extensive period for the complex, but I think until the middle school program gets up and running and developed and you develop an interest level early on, it'll be effective. That's it. And also, let me share this with you. The city of Richmond record has a fifty football games played this year with seven to fifty. And my email address is coachfowler18@gmail.com.
Can you say that all the time?
Coach Fowler18@gmail.com.
Is that F-A-L-L?
F-O-W-L-E-R. And also I'm regional scout for the U.S. Army All-American Game, so I do Maryland, Virginia, and North Carolina. So I have an opportunity to visit pretty much every high school between Maryland and North Carolina. And, uh, by normal standards, our kids are far better. Thank you.
The next item is, um, for Admiral Performance Act, the 2002 SEC Act.
Absolutely. Um, board members, you've seen a couple times the recommendations or ideas that board members have floated, um, and so tonight I'd like to get a quick sense of those that we should instruct our government parish professionals, we can get working on, clarify patrons, fleshing out the ideas. Um, and so I'll open it up for discussions if we've all seen this. Are there any that we, these aren't ones we, we're, we're doing at this point?
We have an opportunity to, uh, meet with our legislative team to kind of discuss and maybe expand on these items here before they, into quarter, maybe we'll put these back together and they'll come back to us.
Sure. Um, and my thought was, if we're gonna go forward and wanna discuss all of these with them, we keep them off on this item, agenda item, but if we're only gonna go for two or three of them, I'd rather allow them to focus that time on preparing to have a proof of discussion with us about those items that we've got presented. Is that clear, Mo?
Clear as mud.
Ms. Harris Mohammed.
Yes, the only concern that I had, and I wanted to make sure that I had it worded correctly, um, was cameras in exceptional education classrooms. And I did not reach out to Ms. Pinky F., um, about it because I thought it had said in classroom, so I was waiting for some possible information from the attorney. So I would like for Ms. Lilly to speak to, um, to that if she can, like, is that possible or is, do we have regulations permitting that? Well, before that, can Ms. Pinky F. speak to what made her come up with that? Um, or what was running through your mind? I think I know, but I want to hear because I, I did not, you know, call someone, even though I was gonna take it up.
Um, gladly. It's my understanding that, uh, this legislation was potentially gonna go forward last year, supported by, uh, now Senator Vance, and, um, I, I'm not sure why it was pulled, but my reasoning, um, my thought behind it was, um, in attending the, uh, Board of Education meetings, there has been substantial conversation about their revisions to seclusion and restraint. And, um, and then based on, uh, having participated in some of the IDP meetings, I thought it would be helpful for us to, uh, help move this forward so that, you know, when these parents go into these meetings and they're making these allegations that, you know, um, their children are being mistreated, they're being physically harmed, that, well, a picture would be worth a thousand words. Um, but as well, my rationale was, we already have cameras in schools, in, in our schools. Um, we're taking pictures of what's going on in the hallways, um, so I thought it might lend itself to help us make sure that we are implementing, um, our exceptional education services with our students with a level of fidelity, and this gives us an opportunity to do some checks and balances.
Thank you. I'm, I'm good with moving that forward. Um, knowing that, I'm sorry, excuse me, I am in support of moving that forward and knowing that Senator Vance first brought it forward, gives me, um, you know, a different change, a different perspective, because then there is some communication, there are some conversations, um, being had across other school districts with this concern. So I'm, I'm fine with that. That was my only concern.
Ms. Mo.
Um, in terms of next steps for this, um, could we have the lobbyists look at it and maybe put it in buckets in terms of what are things that we can work on this year, short term, long term? I mean, we know that we're in a deficit at the state level, and so a lot of the vegetarian things, um, are gonna be harder to get through, um, rather than the policy issues. And so maybe leadership can work with them to kind of put it in buckets or prioritize it before it comes back to us for final approval.
I'm happy to take all these and, and sort of have a, also session on all those sort of things.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Next item, Ms. Mo.
Yes, item on the agenda is item four point zero, to receive a report from board members that attended the Head Start Policy Council meeting.
Uh, yes, I have the privilege of attending the Head Start Policy Council meeting, I believe, on October seventeenth and eighteenth. Um, did I bring forward something, Ms. Lewis, to have them recognize their new officers at the next meeting? If, if you would please, the board, I'd like that they take that opportunity to present while they're present.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions? Next item, Ms. Mo.
The next item is, uh, five, legislature, as a second item, um, the date in the next item is item six for action items. Receive for action of a resolution recognizing parent involvement.
Before we read it, um, Ms. Mo brought this idea forward, and I don't know if you wanna talk about it, Ms. Mo, before we read the resolution.
Briefly, um, uh, November has been National Family Involvement Month for quite some time, and, uh, in doing the work with Pi One, um, was reminded of it last month, and so thought that because this board had obvitously taken an opportunity to, uh, put a resolution on the record, that this would be the most appropriate opportunity for us to do so, knowing how important our relationships, um, you know, are the parents. We all agree that when a parent is involved in their child's education, that child seems to do better. So this is our opportunity to, uh, let the parents know all of the, uh, we know that, um, we know they care about their children, and we honor and celebrate them for that.
Ms. Jackson, I'd like to court, um, read the resolution.
Whereas parents and families are ensuring that we're helping children reach their full potential, and whereas parents and families are actively involved in participating in school events, are active members of school groups, and support the local teachers, administrators, and all school personnel, and whereas when parents and families are actively involved in their child's school, outcomes for all students include, and whereas parent and family involvement must be recognized as critical components of education, and whereas a strong partnership between educators and families is necessary for our children to achieve success in school, become productive citizens, and contribute to our communities and society, and whereas the Virginia Department of Education in collaboration with the Parent Educational Advocacy Training Center, Center for Family Involvement at Virginia Commonwealth University and the Family Involvement Network, are committed to helping families, schools, and communities work together to build better futures for all children. And whereas family involvement in education month is an opportunity to recognize the important relationships between families and education institutions, and the work being done throughout the Commonwealth to assure that Virginians work together to build better futures for all children. Now therefore be resolved, the school board of the city of Richmond joins Government Parents of the College and might pass in November two thousand sixteen as Family Involvement Education Month in the Commonwealth of Virginia.
Is there a motion?
Sole.
For a second.
Second.
If they're moving properly, second, any discussion of the motion? Ms. Mo.
Ms. Boyd.
Yes.
Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
Ms. Harris Mohammed.
Absolutely, yes.
Ms. Pinky F.
Yes.
Ms. Coleman.
Yes.
Ms. Coleman.
Yes.
Ms. Mo, next item, Ms. Mo.
The next item is six point zero two, receive for action a recommendation to improve a new server lease.
Thank you for giving me this, Chairman, members of the board. Uh, what we have before you tonight is a, uh, a four-year lease that will replace the, uh, the back on all of our student information servers. It's where we keep all of our students, uh, grade, all our curriculum, all of our testing information. Uh, this was a scheduled replacement. This will be a four-year lease. It's before you tonight because of the valid value of two hundred ninety-two thousand. Uh, these are three extremely large, uh, I think in the neighborhood of eight hundred carat weight units, um, that are about sixty-nine thousand dollars a piece. And they have a annual maintenance of about four thousand dollars to make sure they continue to run. Again, this is a scheduled replacement, um, that's before you because of this, because of the valid value. And, uh, from here, and Ms. Morrison here, if you can answer her.
Any questions? Ms. Mo, Ms. Mo says.
Just very quickly, uh, are you all convinced that, uh, this increases our capacity such that the problems that will happen in the past, and maybe it can minimize those?
These servers, that's a fair question, Ms. Moore. Um, these servers are, um, are about eight times the capacity that we have today, um, but there's, there's broader issues with connection, and that's not necessarily just the server size, that's the actual pipe between end and server. So, um, that, that will fix the, the access necessarily, but the amount of storage capability is significantly smaller.
Ms. Moore, do you have any to add to that?
This is to actually replace the housing of all of our applications. So in particular, you can talk off the line about any, um, problems you're talking about in particular with that.
Okay, so this, this, it's not what I think.
No, it's okay.
Any further questions? Is there a motion to approve the lease?
Sole.
For a second.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Same number, Ms. Mo, would you call it over, please?
Ms. Boyd.
Yes.
Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
Ms. Harris Mohammed.
Yes.
Ms. Pinky F.
Yes.
Ms. Coleman.
Yes.
Next item, Ms. Mo.
The next item is to receive for action resources. Uh, Dr. Benn, this evening's human resources actions calls for the nomination of twenty-one employees, the change of contract to forty-five employees, transfer of six employees, the resignation of eight employees, retirement of one employee, name termination of two employees, name change for two employees, the rescission of employment for two employees, and the rescission of retirement for one employee, which also, um, in general.
Ms. Harris Mohammed has a couple of questions, Ms. Mo.
Well, Ms. Epps is not here, so I can send that down to Dr. Benn, and maybe he can send a message back.
I'm prepared to answer any questions that you might have, so, unless you want to send us a question, you can do that as well.
I have my question, so.
So we may not be able to answer any questions?
Well, I mean, I, I've said my question, so.
Ms. Mo.
I have a process question. Um, I noticed on this particular report that there are twenty-four actions that date back to all this discussion, and just was kind of wondering, um, is that an anomaly? You know, why are there so many actions on this report that something as simple as what I see are just maybe just changing a position code?
That's cleanup. Sometimes when you run reports, you realize that somebody's in the wrong position code. That is cleanup.
Okay, so would this then require that, um, it's on that code, it's some of that cleanup, that now we're going to see, um, is, is that then followed up by these change of contracts?
Some of them, not all of them. But yes. So for example, if you're in the right position, say you're a teacher, but you're in the wrong, um, position number, it's just cleaning it up so that the data matches, so you know you've had some data integrity issues, but this is part of the process, cleaning up the.
Ms. Moore.
How many bases do we have there? Do you have that information?
No, but I, I can text and share it out to you.
Okay. Per, per level. And I still have that one question, but so, really two questions, but it's.
And I still have that one question, but really two questions, but it's the same type of questions.
That's okay.
I think we can knock it out for the next one.
Next item, Madam Court.
The next item is item 7, Consent of Gender, and I'm an ass to approve minutes of October 17th, 2016.
Will be sent out?
Yes, they will.
Is there a motion to approve this? For a second.
Oh, a second, I'm sorry, a second, I'm sorry.
Any discussion of the minutes? Same item, Madam Court.
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Morrison?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Mrs. Fainia?
No.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Stand.
Motion passes.
Next item?
The next item is item 8, other informational items. And these 8.01, the disciplinary court will be deferred. We do have budget transfers, and they will go to the board house. And that's just for informational, but they don't charge.
Are there any questions, Mr. Myers, about the budget actions? Thank you.
The next item is votes.
Before we go to close, our student member, I got to do it in the beginning. When we started with the tradition here, we assigned our student representatives some homework at first meeting, to come back at the second meeting. Your perspective is important to us, and so if there is a policy or an issue that you see as you attend school each and every day, that we can address, that is important to you, your students, fellow students. If you could bring that idea back to us the next meeting, and just let us know what it is, and if it's something you can address, we'll look. Okay? Again, I want to thank our student for being here. A wonderful young man with a bright, bright future. And we'll see you in a couple of weeks. Ms. Harris Mohammed, would you read this to the court?
Pursuant to the Personnel Section 2-2, 3711A1, Section 2.2-3711A2, and the Section 2.2-3711A7 of the Code of Virginia. Nineteen fifty is a minute. I move that the school board of the city of Richmond convene a closed session to discuss respect of candidates for employment and the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salary, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers or employees of the division, including consideration of the human resources agenda of this date, to consider the admission or disciplinary matters and any other matters that was involved in disclosures, information pertaining, and its the last record concerning a Richmond Public School student, and for consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or litigation regarding personnel matters, including employee matters 14, 15, 36, and 15, 16, 28, where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the school board.
For a second? Polls in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? For now, for a second.
Urban districts typically by the third year, 50% have gone. So, we're feeling very good about that. We supported them for three years, as I said, during the residency year, and then that career coach that works with them for two years, at least an hour a week when they are teachers of record. I bolded the last bullet because as the director of the Center for Teacher Leadership, I'm very proud of the fact that this is the only model of future preparation that not only increases the retention and effectiveness of new teachers, but also of our veteran teachers. And so, I'm sharing with you some of the quotes from our most recent survey of our mentor teachers, our CRCs. And you see there that they are learning from their resident as much as the resident is learning from them. I love that last quote where they're saying, "It's not just making me a better teacher and coworker, but a better human being, and especially the ability to work with students." In your packet, you have some information about our program, especially how our students, our graduates are impacting our schools and the evaluation of principals. But you see there, 100% of our RPS veteran teachers that we work with say that this program is helping to make them a better teacher. I'm excited to tell you too, that in the new grant, we have funding to create Teachers for Tomorrow programs in all of RPS high schools, where we'll be encouraging juniors and seniors to consider a teaching career. VCU is offering dual enrollment, dual credit. We will be creating matriculation agreements so they can come right into VCU, into RTR, and come back into their home school system. So, we're really excited about that. You have this wrapped in your packet, I believe, yes? So, you can see it very clearly. And what this is showing you is the impact we're having on meeting the staffing needs of RPS. You see the areas that we have been recruiting for. The blue part of that bar shows you how many teachers you hired last year that were fully qualified, fully licensed. The red are provisionally licensed, which means that if they don't get licensed within three years, they will have to leave the system. So, we've got to do something about that churning. So, what you're seeing there, and I call your attention, especially since that we had the conversation about special education just a moment ago, to look at the SE Secondary and SE Elementary, that's Special Exceptional Education. Of the 23 fully licensed special education teachers you hired last year in secondaries, special exceptional needs, 11 of those were our graduates. Six of the 11 in elementary, so a half of those people who were fully qualified. And I would invite you to think about if we didn't exist, how large that red bar would be. So, critically important. I'll also call your attention to the document here in terms of our principals. And I was really pleased to hear our students say, "Climate is important." You see that 75% of our graduates have been rated by principals as extraordinary or above average in teacher effectiveness. But we're really pleased about 85% of them being, you know, contributing positively to school culture, because that's really important. That can be a problem in terms of, you know, the stress of an urban system. So, really proud of that. And also call your attention to the fact that we're already getting some student achievement data, and we are showing that our graduates, their students, are performing significantly better in science SOLs than non-RTR graduates. So, we're excited about that. I'll end with this slide, and we do have a video, so you can hear directly from the voices of our residents and our graduates about how they feel about the program and the preparation. And again, to speak to our student, they talk about being a family. So, I'm really pleased with that. So, very short recruitment video, and I guess I just. Richmond Teacher Residency is a partnership between VCU School of Education and Richmond Public Schools. Our mission is to recruit, prepare, support, and retain extraordinary, inspiring teachers and teacher leaders who are committed to the students of Richmond Public Schools for the long term. What makes our program so unique is that it is school-based, intensive, and individuals get to work alongside master teachers that we have carefully selected and trained to support them as they learn to teach Richmond.
The support from Richmond Teacher Residency staff, the educators at VCU, everything was just an incredible experience. I don't think I've felt any more sharp in my life educationally right now. I'm feeling I wouldn't do anything at this point that I wanted to.
Richmond Teacher Residency provides a lot of incentives for individuals who want to become urban teachers in our community. First, they receive a living stipend of $24,000. In addition, VCU provides reduced tuition rate that is only 61% of in-state tuition. So, that by the end, you're not only profession-ready, you've earned a master's degree, and you are fully licensed to teach in the state of Virginia.
The traditional teacher prep program is two years worth of classes, and then six weeks worth of time in the classroom. Versus RTR, I mean, it's a really intense portion of the time where you're taking classes. And then the bulk of the learning happens from September to June. You're in the class, you're reflecting the entire time. By the end of the year, you're teaching all the classes, calling parents, knowing that. All of the things that are not part of what you learned in grad school.
Having an entire year being immersed in the school while still learning and not being a teacher of record is invaluable. Like most teacher programs, you get two months, three months at that, if you're lucky.
The RTRs are very beneficial here mainly because they have the opportunity to work with a seasoned teacher who has been identified as someone who can encourage, build relationships with students, and truly get to the heart of what students seem to be successful.
Having that person to spend a whole year with you, and then having your support and continuing the support of them, and continuing the things of Richmond Teacher Residency.
RTR really focuses and holds a heavy idea of urban education. I think that's very different from any type of education throughout the state. Because our kids come with so much more than just coming to school. You have to know how to deal with other things that they bring to the table. So, RTR and the education that you give the family helps you understand where they're coming from.
Build a relationship with a child that you find their interest. You find out what motivates them. That is the difference between urban district and all other districts. You really have to get to the root of what makes this child tick. And those children will come to school for you, not because it is the law. And so, that's what I believe sets RTR apart from the other programs.
It creates not a monetary commitment, but it's more of a commitment from within. It's an honorable commitment. You feel like you want to be here, maybe feel like a part of the family. So, Richmond Teacher Residency is turning into a teacher to be able to do this correct, to do the right thing, to make an impact.
If you're committed to social justice, to leveling the playing field for all students, and to improving our community, Richmond Teacher Residency is the program for you. Okay, we're certainly open to any questions you may have. There is another document in your packet that shows you where all of our graduates are currently teaching. And so, you can see that we are placing them in high-need schools, and they are, in some schools, becoming a critical mass. And we're hoping that that is going to really change those schools. And I'm excited to report that last week, I got a call from the U.S. Secretary of Education's office, and he is planning on visiting RTR on November the 2nd. So, we're excited about that as well. Lot of great attention to this program. Questions?
Ms. Joe?
Thank you so much for your presentation. Very thorough, very informative. I'm not sure if this should be directed towards you or Dr. Curry, but Dr. Curry, you and I have spoken about this offline. I would be very interested in knowing what the possibilities would be like to have some form of outreach for parents and the communities surrounding our schools to see if we can possibly get them on the track to becoming educators or somewhere within the teaching profession, just to strengthen our partnerships with our parents and our communities, and things along that line.
Well, thank you for asking that question. It was a point that I meant to say, we are focusing very heavily locally in the last couple of years, and that's led to an increase in diversity in our candidates, and also people who are already here, committed to our community. So, we do hold specific, what we call coffee and conversations, and we invite anybody who is volunteering in the schools, who is serving as a substitute, instructional aides, and so forth, to those meetings. And that's the other reason we're excited about that Teachers for Tomorrow, because we really want to build that pipeline and invest in our community, because those are the individuals who are going to stay.
Thank you for that. Just one quick follow-up comment. I would love to see that concentration focus on some of our areas surrounding our broad market, elementary schools, our MLK, middle schools, and where they tend to say there's a high concentration of poverty. If we can find a way to get those communities involved and on the track to becoming educators in some capacity. Right.
I just wanted to thank you all so very much. I am a huge fan, huge supporter. I love supporting the teachers with school supplies. I hear them have given me a report that they're doing well. It was a little rough for a minute, but I just really appreciate what you all are doing, Dr. Curry, the support, and making sure that they're doing okay, and, you know, giving them that layer of support that they need throughout the school year. So, I don't have any questions. I fully support this program. I just wanted to say thank you for allowing me to support them with schools with their classroom supplies.
Welcome. And Dr. Curry, I just had a conversation this afternoon about a resident who's struggling and, you know, making sure that we're in there, supporting them. And Dr. Curry always says that every teacher has their first year, even those that are as well-prepared as we prepare them. And that's why that career coach is so critical. We've seen some residents who did not have that, had a great residency year, but that first year as teachers of record, because maybe their residency year was at the high school level, and then they were hired at a middle school level, really struggled. And then we've seen some incredible success stories. So, one that really was struggling with classroom management as a result of the career coach who worked with him. He's now the model that the career coach brings all other beginning teachers to see. So, I just want to say, that piece is so critical. Other questions?
Ms. Ray.
I don't have questions. I just wanted to say how amazing it was meeting the teachers. I'm really excited. And I was talking to a class at VCU, a leadership class today, and I met one of your brand-new residents. So, the work continues, and I'm grateful, and RPS is better for it.
Thank you, thank you. And mark November 18th on your calendar, that's our next selection day. We always invite you to the VIP Breakfast to meet our candidates. And we invite you to help us assess them if you'd like. That would be wonderful. That's Friday, November 18th, and we are going to be at Blue Silver.
Ms. Joe?
Thank you. As your VCU alumni on this particular board, I just wanted to put that out there, just a little plug.
Why?
What percentage of our teachers are actually through from the program of all of our teachers that we know?
Gosh, all teachers? I don't know. I mean, that chart I showed you was just for the newly hired teachers last year. I would have to ask RPS, I guess, HR office to give us that kind of data.
Okay, thank you.
I too would like to make a comment. I haven't been here since the inception. It's definitely in my tenure on the school board, one of those programs that makes me proud of having an opportunity to serve and be a part of seeing that more to fruition. And the young people who participated, they really, really are amazing people. And a lot of people talk about social justice. I mean, you find young people who are really, really committed to recognizing what they're entering into, and they really want to make a difference. And for me, that's what's going to help change our society, is giving young people an opportunity to be a part of something meaningful, and they're providing the tools to go forward and make a difference. So, thank you all so, so, so much for just a fine job, and I pray that it continues.
Thank you. Well, we're constantly looking for that support because it is a program, especially because of the stipend that we provide for the residents, because it is so intensive, they can't work part-time or take off a semester. So, I hope you'll be out there working with us on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Court?
The next item is item 4.02, receive the annual SOO accreditation results.
Evening, school board members, Dr. Men, colleagues, family and friends. My name's Loletta Wade. I'm the manager of testing and data services. My purpose tonight is to go over the SOL results from 2016-16 school year and to give you a projection of where we think it will be for accreditation this year. To start with, we'll look at our overall averages. If you look at the screen, or if you have the PowerPoint in front of you, you'll see that our reading scores have continuously improved over the last three years. For math, we had a small decrease from a 62 to a 58 this school year. In history, we also had a decline in our scores from a 72 to a 67. In science, a small decrease from a 66 to a 64. And our double area this year, in the last two years, has been in writing. We went from a 56 to a 48 to a 45. So if we break it down by grade level, you can see that in 2013, in 2014, 15, we had a pretty good year. Every grade level improved in their SOL scores except for the EOC reading. And then this year, we had three decreases in our overall, in our grade level scores. Third grade went down two points, eighth grade went down one point, and EOC went down three points. But overall, we were able to gain one percentage, one point this year in reading. As I stated earlier, writing is an area of concern for our district. In 2014, 15, we improved five points in eighth grade. However, we went down seven points this school year. And of course, writing, we went down two points in 2014, 15. However, this year, we did gain seven percent points. And overall, our writing scores went down by three points. So when we get to math, you can also see that 2014, 15 was a pretty decent year. We had a lot of improvement during that year. Only one point went down in Algebra I. But this school year, we had a large decrease in the most area, well, not a large decrease in every area, but we had a decrease in every grade level in our math scores. And we'll kind of talk about some of the changes that occurred that could contribute to that in a few minutes. For history, in 14, 15, we had three areas where we went down. Went down in World History I by six points. Went down in World History II by nine points, and VA US by two points. For overall that year, we had a two-point game. In 2015, 16, this school year, last school year, we had a decrease in VA Studies, World History I, World History II, and VA US. And overall, we had a decrease of five points this school year. In our science, in 14, 15, we did pretty well. We had some improvements in every grade level except for biology. And this school year, we went down in biology, chemistry, and earth science. And we declined two points this school year in science. One of the differences that we had going on this school year, or last school year, he's saying this school year, the last school year, is that we wanted to make sure that our students were on the correct pathway for their courses. What that means is, in the past, many students were going from eighth-grade math and taking foundations. Well, the path is when they pass eighth-grade math, they should take Algebra I. And so this year, we have 462 more students enrolled and participate in the SOL test for Algebra I. And also in history, World History I, we had 616 more students take that assessment. And we also eliminated again, eliminated the foundation courses, and allowed students to get in the correct pathway and take credit classes and not electives. We also provided clarification to students on the course options in the sequence. For instance, students don't have to take World History I in order to take World History II. And we also know that we have some significant changes to our writing. One thing we have noticed as a district, we have used the work keys assessment somewhat as a crutch, and we know that the work keys will be eliminated in 2017, 18. So we can expect some scores to kind of decline again once that occurs. But we do have a plan in place and working on a plan to make sure we kind of capture that as we move forward. So we want to see how do we compare to our neighboring district, our neighboring divisions. As you can see, we cannot, we are not comparable by demographic to our other districts nor to the state. We have a 9.5% Caucasian. We have 74.5% African-American and 12.9% Hispanic. We have the same goals, but are looked a little different. When we look at our percentage of students with a disability and ELL, we can also see here for our district that we have a significantly higher percentage of students with disabilities as well as a higher number of students with ELL, and that number continues to grow each year. And overall, our school-age students, the poverty level is at a 40%. When we look at how we compare to the other neighboring divisions by SOLs, we can see that no matter the division, that growth and progress is slow. And in Richmond City, we are behind the other divisions, but we're still making steady and slow progress when it comes to reading. When we look at writing, as I stated earlier, writing is an area of concern for us. And some of the challenges that we have, and we know, is that we use too many of the alternative assessments for our students, and we know that those assessments will be eliminated in 2017, 18. And so we expect that there may be some challenges ahead of us with those. For our math, as you can see, many other district divisions have slow progress. And we had a great progress in 2014, 13, but we kind of declined just a little bit last school year. And again, we're making sure our students are taking the appropriate classes and getting that into a credit class and not just a foundation class. And the same thing with history. We have a small decline from a 72 to a 67 in history. And we are giving students more opportunity to select courses that best fit their needs. In science, we had a decline from a 66 to a 64%. So for the projected accreditation, currently, we have 30% of our schools that are fully accredited compared to 72% of Hemarco schools, 100% of Hanover schools, and 92% of Tresseville County schools. As of today, we have 14 schools that are fully accredited. We have three elementary school, three elementary schools that are partially accredited, two middle schools, one high school, and one specialty school that is partially accredited. And then we have 11 elementary schools that are to be determined. We have four middle schools to be determined and one high school. And what that means is, once the state votes, those schools will either become reconstituted or they'll be denied. And currently, we have six schools that are currently denied accreditation. But we want to note that we have more schools today fully accredited than we had in 2013, 14. In 2013, 14, we had 11 schools fully accredited. Last year, we had 17, and this year, we have 14. But it's important to note that two schools that are in that partially accredited row column only miss accreditation by one point. One school needed a 70 for math, they got a 69. One school needed a 75 in English, and they got a 64. So they were really close, but they didn't make. A 75, they got a 74. If you look at this chart, these are all the 22 schools that are currently in the TBD status or denied status. In 2012, 13, all these schools were warned. Many of these schools were warned in either English or mathematics, and they then had a pass rate of 30, 40, or 50%. And so looking at that in 2013, 2012, 13, it should have been a clarification that those schools were headed to the denied status for 2015, 16, regardless of their progress. And if you look at the chart, you can see many of these schools showed remarkable progress over the last few years. But with the state of Virginia, it doesn't matter how much you improve, if you don't meet the benchmark for three consecutive, you don't meet the benchmark for three consecutive years, your school will be denied. But if you just take for instance, Gentle Park, Gentle Park is one of our schools that will be either reconstituted or denied. This school had a 33% increase in English, a 36% increase in math and math. They have shown remarkable progress over the last few years, but they're going to be either reconstituted this year or denied despite the progress they've made over the last few years. So we are in a transition state. And as we know, transition is a process. It's not an event. It doesn't happen instantaneously. As you saw with our division trends, growth is slow. And we want to keep going in the right direction. We have moved from what we have known and done for a period of transition to arrive to a desired new way of behaving and doing our job. As Oprah Murphy always quote Maya Angelou, "We know better, we do better." And so we are in a transition state to make improvements in our district. We thought this survey from the Chamber of RBA Merrill Survey was very important. As you know, right now, the candidates are debating tonight for their candidacy as a mayor. And we had this survey, and we noticed that the majority of the respondents that took this survey said that RPS matters, that they want the school board to improve the quality of public schools. That was the number one, the top issue they felt was the most important. In this survey, we also noted that the respondents gave RPS a grade of an A, B, C, D, or F, and they had the option to not answer the question. And so in this particular survey, the people who did the survey, Chambers RBA, pointed out that 80% of the people who voted gave Richmond an A, B, or C. We believe that they could have done that better and said that 48% ranked RPS with an A, B, or C. And that's higher than the D and F. And then 11%, we don't know whether they would have selected, so they should not have included that in the count. But we think this is a very positive thing. The 48% of the people who responded gave Richmond an A, B, or C. And then the people who responded also had the opportunity to select why they gave RPS a grade of a C or below. And you can kind of see here that the majority of them said it was due to poor equipment and facilities. So where are we at as a district today, our corrective action plans? We are going to request tonight a request for a division academic review. We have already had our schools and our principals submit their school progress plan, and they will be available for the public to view shortly. The student board member talked about providing trauma support to our students in RPS. We are doing just that because we want to get to the group call for the behavior issue, and we believe that that trauma support will provide that. We have realigned our supervision so that the assistants, the assistant superintendents are following a feeder pattern. We had numerous leadership changes this year in the district, in central office, and in the schools. And then we are rebranding who we are, because we are indeed RPS.
Questions?
Tell the follow-on as well.
Thank you so much for your presentation. In fact, the news, this is my first time being able to obtain this information. Trying to meet with some of our directors over secondary and elementary education has been virtually impossible to do so far. But in saying that, the first thing that really captured my attention was that there was an expected decrease in our writing area due to the work keys going away in 2017. And that has been the trend, I know you're new here, but that has been the trend that I've heard for a very long time, that there's almost a setup for failure. And I'm not hearing what we're going to do proactively to make sure that there's something in place now to turn things around in that respect. I'm just going back to the wording that you used in your presentation. Secondly, there was a count that was given of 400, I think, 62, 82, or something like that, new Algebra students. And so what I didn't hear is what the reassignment was of math teachers to facilitate those students, because for a very long time, I know we've had a Part I and Part II for Algebra I, which causes our students not to be prepared for national exams like ACT and SAT in their latter high school years, because they're not getting to do more advanced maths throughout their high school curriculum. So that was concerning for me. The SPP, the student, I'm just trying to put everything out there so that I don't have to go back. The SPP, the Student Progress Plan, I only have the Academic Improvement Plan to reference, but I know we had a late start update somewhere in October when that was first implemented, maybe 2014, 15? Maybe 15? And so I'm wondering, when did the training start for our staff to be able to implement that in a timely fashion so that we won't have the same excuses with the Academic Improvement Plan? And what the actual scoring of our schools that are to be announced or to be determined, the 16 schools, when can we expect that information to come forward to the board? And then lastly, Genter Park, when are we going to determine when that's going to be reconstitualized or denied accreditation? And what has been the growth over a two-year period?
Let's start with the last one first. We don't determine that. So you're saying we. To be determined, all of those are state determined.
But do we have a timeline as to the month that they think?
This month will come out.
That's what I want, with the timeframe.
Right, okay. But you said we, that's not us.
No, I was just saying that just whether you all want to know, so that we all know as a board.
Chances are, unfortunately, releasing, you're going to know almost the same time with you because the press gets it.
Yeah, that's true. I just want to have a timeline, not that we will all know together, but exactly when we can anticipate that information.
And I was speaking about the School Progress Plan, the SPP. And you asked about when the principals were trained and how that levered. The principals got a head start in late May of last year. And then in August, during the leadership conference, the principals, they were also trained. And throughout the time before we submitted in October, we had online training, and we had gave a support to make sure their plans were correctly submitted in a timely fashion. And if they had any questions or any suggestions, we also went through that.
So what timeframe overall did the principals have to prepare with the SPP? Because I'm hearing kind of different things all over the district.
It's completed.
I know, what kind of preparedness, like whether the three-week period, was it how frequently? Because I'm hearing that there was not ample time to put those packages together or those plans. Because I'm hearing that there was not ample time to put those packages together, or those plans together.
We signed in last May. So they had the opportunity to gather information last May. And then those principals who were new got the information in early August during the leadership conference. So they had from August until October.
Okay.
And it would have been the same timeframe if it was a school improvement plan and start. It's pretty much the same, would have been the same timeframe.
Okay, I'll just set up something with you so I can see exactly what they were exposed to, so I can address some of the concerns that I'm hearing. Thank you for that part.
Hello, Mrs. Taylor.
How you doing, yourself?
Great, um, Dr. Jackson, I've got several questions, I know one of them was asking about the number of students in Algebra One that had come support those. The teachers who were teaching Algebra One Part One are also qualified to teach the Algebra course, so their student is supported by algebra teachers.
Okay.
And then we had another question.
Um, actually, my concern was that if that was a part of the rationale for them possibly not performing as well as they could have because the number, uh, increased so drastically, then I wanted to know what we had in place to accommodate those additional students that were saying contributed to the problem.
But definitely those students need more support, so do you have, um, advisory programs or remediation programs within the schools to help support those students to make sure that they're able to be successful on the test?
So then the increased numbers didn't really add to the scores dropping in those areas, like what was it, geometry was twenty points?
For sure, I mean, and the increase in the number of students taking an assessment like you see here, it definitely triggered to the scores, um, declining.
And you wouldn't necessarily know the problem until you get the results, so you get some information as you're going through. And then you also find out the result of the assessment, the additional support. So it's a continuous cycle plan, do that. And this doesn't happen instantaneously. So some you can find out about as you're going through the course, if you're struggling with a teacher, a school-based assessment. But you also have normal measures to tell you, you know, a large bump in increase in the number of students is not uncommon if they did. And now we're also, now using that information to inform practices. Because if a school had a large dip in math, then that should probably be one of their focus areas, you know, math component for the SBB, which also then gets into your action plan for improvement.
I guess I was just wondering with the level of the number of assessments that we do from benchmarks and the like, the individual classroom assessments, that I was looking for something more proactive that may have projected what that type of outcome, at least when it comes to something of that degree of decline, that we would have some type of indicators prior to us seeing the reports that we've seen tonight.
What you're looking at is students who might otherwise have been placed in a math course that didn't earn them a math credit are now being placed in a course that's going to earn them their math credit, which is Algebra One, with support. So it's recognized that these students may have challenges with math, but that does not, uh, give us, you know, it doesn't make sense to not give them the opportunity to be in the correct class so that they can have an opportunity to earn that math credit. Otherwise, what you have is now you have a tenth grader who has not yet earned a math credit. And now it's going to take him to eleventh grade to earn a math credit, and you need to have at least three, four math credits, uh, to, to earn a degree. So we, we're setting students up for failure when we don't put them in Algebra One by ninth grade.
And I totally agree with that, I'm just wondering what type of assistance are we putting, what kind of aid are we putting in the setting while it's happening instead of talking about it a year after the fact?
Right.
After we've gone through the coursework.
Right, so yes, the ARDT, that's one opportunity, but another opportunity would be something Armstrong did, and they placed students in Algebra One as they should have, but they also placed them in a foundations-like course to give them that additional support, so there are multiple ways that it can be done.
Okay.
Absolutely, it's going to pay fun, Title, what, Title One tutors.
And then last thing you want to know.
And following up on that, um, a part of that Algebra Readiness Program, it actually extends from fifth through ninth grade, but it does have the goal of catching those students who are in danger of failing that Algebra One SOL. But what you saw captured in that number that increased was some students who may not have had that rigorous standards of learning-based math class for a year. So now we have them back in that pool, and now we know that they're there, and we have a couple of different things that are able to work with them. Um, so the Algebra Readiness is fifth through ninth grade. Once they go beyond ninth grade, we're using, um, state project graduation funds, where we're able to bring tutors in and work specifically with those students who failed an SOL that's needed for graduation. So that way, they're able to get equally support from students who have excelled, a lot of these students are, um, the tutors are physics majors and engineering majors who know math very well. And they've spent a lot of time in schools like Armstrong, Hueda, and John Marshall, really just touring and working with those students, and we've seen some gains as a result of that. Um, project graduation is also being used to help with the writing piece that we discussed a few minutes ago, because again, that fifth through ninth grade transition period is where we really focus heavily on writing because the K-three is typically about more focusing on getting the students to be able to read. So again, those project graduation funds that we're getting from the state as well as the Title One support that comes to play are being used to target those students for interventions. And one thing that we're absolutely doing, um, an increasingly better job of is monitoring those interventions to make sure that once we assign a student, we recognize that you need some help, we see that you're growing throughout the course of the remediation that's being given to you. In addition to several visual supports and, you know, tools and programs and things of that nature that are coming in very healthy stride.
Excellent, thank you for that, um, I just wanted to just conclude with a comment that I would love to see more of the writing approach in the earlier years. Um, a lot of times I'm going and seeing students being read to, and they're not doing the reading, I think that reading component should happen a lot earlier so that they can get into the, to the reading, to the writing rather, and comprehension, comprehension, um, levels as they do in a lot of the counties surrounding counties and private school settings.
Absolutely, and another piece of our writing is that we're doing professional development with our staff about writing across the content. So apart from we start to see these issues and these trends in the data, we talk to the teachers. And a lot of the upper grades' teachers were saying, we don't have those fundamental skills that they missed when they were in those younger years. So we're providing them with professional development so that they can better understand how students learn to read and how to teach them to write. Because if you're, you know, a high school English teacher, the fundamentals of teaching a beginning student to write aren't exactly what you do on a day-to-day basis. So we've been definitely trying to firm up those skills in the teachers as well.
Miss Taylor, I would share with you that the change process is not over yet.
Oh, I understand that.
Saying that, so as we identify the changes to the program, to close the gap by putting kids in the right course sequence, that transition phase is characterized by researchers being inconsistent in performance, messy, emotional, a whole bunch of other things until you get the foundation in place. What we're seeing here is you can't undo multiple years of challenges in two school years. So we're also medicating rebuilding the foundation.
Absolutely, and I, and I do appreciate that.
Writing, because we talked about it today.
Yeah, I appreciate that dearly, I really do. I just don't want what adults do to, to be neglect for in a certain sense, to impact the innate abilities that our children all have. And so while we're getting it together and figuring it out, I want to make sure that our students have every opportunity possible.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Taylor, Ms. Mohammed.
Thank you all so much for the information. I have a couple of questions, I'm just gonna mount at the same time. Um, you explained a little bit about what has happened, but what I'm not hearing is for the writing scores, how have we used or utilized our media specials? How are we using the library for instructional practices? We talked about the four hundred and sixty-two, four hundred and sixty-some students that left Math eight, or articulated from Math eight, and then there was that middle class. And then you found out that that little class, I guess, should not have existed, and then you put them in Algebra One. Did you all consider they may need that class? Um, four hundred and sixty-two students is a lot. And I understand that the goal was to have ninth graders taking Algebra One by the ninth grade year, or students taking Algebra One by the ninth grade year. But I am of the mindset that every child is not ready for Algebra One by the ninth grade year. So there has to be something in place for every ninth grader in every high school. Okay, and then, have, have something else, I don't know what that in place is. Um, how effectively are we using ARDT? So, I'm very familiar with ARDT. I, I know the ins and outs, I know the effective use of it and the ineffective use of it, I've seen it used both ways. So are we monitoring teachers, um, in terms of how they're using that data? Because our students, we can receive that data from ARDT as far back as fifth grade, if they've been in Virginia. Are we allowing teachers use to that data? If so, how are they using it then? Because ARDT, the Algebra Readiness Diagnostic Test, is a, is a viable tool to tell you the students are going to pass the Algebra One SOL, if we're using it effectively. And I don't think that we are based on the scores that, um, the scores that I saw. When we reassign the teachers, I heard Doc say that, um, the teachers who were teaching Algebra One Part One or Two was, were also certified to teach Algebra One, of course. But then, I mean, did we work with them on teaching both components and the parts as one? You can't assume that they know how to do that when they've taught it in parts for so long. And then my last question is, um, if, if we can go back to, to the slide, the schools AC or more, I know poor equipment and, and facilities topped the chart at sixty-seven percent, but you stopped right there. I believe every bullet after that is equally important. So, you know, who did the surveys go to? I think my household didn't get one. So I, you know, I just want to know, were they? Oh, this was the chamber?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So we don't know from the chamber who, who they went, okay. Eighteen hundred people, okay, okay. Well, thank you, Dr. Ben, but, um, equally as important, everything behind is sixty-seven percent. You mentioned poor equipment and facilities, and that's it, but everything else drives a school issue. And, and you ought to talk about that, so thank you.
Um, in regards to the algebra piece, um, for the ninth graders, there are several supports currently in place. And what we had was not that we're making a wholesale change to the mathematics coursework at that level, but just restructuring to get forced students to access it the way that you kind of outlined. So, a general education student will come in and you're going to take Algebra One in ninth grade. That's it, that's all, you're fine if you take that. If you're a student who's in general education but struggling a little bit, you would take Algebra One along with the Foundations of Algebra course. And the mis-scheduling that we recognized was happening was that some students would only be in Foundations of Algebra. So that's where you really saw that influx that came into that Algebra One class. But that Foundations course is there as a portability so that if I'm in Algebra One, but I need some additional support keeping up, or every other day I have this Foundations of Algebra course that's there to shore up those learning gaps. If I'm a student who truly struggles, that's where the Part One and Part Two course comes in at, where you would take the Algebra One Part One during your freshman year, which would basically be the first semester of Algebra One spread out over the course of the year. Then you would take Algebra One Part Two, where you would take the SOL at the end of that second year, which allows that student who needs some additional support, some additional time, and that is provided from the state in exactly that fashion. Now, once I finish that Algebra One Part Two, I have to take Geometry and Algebra Two in both one year to make sure that I earn my math credits to graduate. But that, that course is there for that ability. And Geometry functions in the same way. So if I'm not an exceptional education student, I can take Algebra One Part One and Part Two, or I can take Geometry in two parts. So I have the option to take either of them to be able to give me some additional time to work with my teacher. I'm not a great math kid, maybe I can write essays and books and novels, you know, all across the world. But if math isn't my thing, there are pathways there, so those other courses function as supports for them. And it still qualifies you for on-time graduation.
Students really need that, but for the majority of the students, we don't just place them in Part One, is what we're saying.
And, and I know you were going to say something, Dr. Ben, but you know what I think hurts us sometimes with those students that fall in this gap? Our math is year-long, that Part One is year-long. Instead of it being a semester-based, they could, a four-by-four, they can quickly finish that Part One. I'm not saying this is an upset for the entire district, but those walk-on students, um, when they take that Part One all year long, and then the next year they take Part Two, you know, the math teacher has to spend the first nine to twelve weeks reintroducing the Part One concept. So we look at, I mean, this is, you know, something a board can look at, but possibly moving to, looking at research and moving to a four-by-four, um, because we can catch those kids in that semester, instead of them waiting a whole year, taking Part Two.
That would pretty much equate to a general Algebra One class with foundations backing it up, because those students would take math every day. So if I was struggling and you put me in math every day for a year, you may not see the same gains that you would over a two-year course instead of in algebra in that traditional sense.
I, I disagree with that, because I've been in both, I've been in both types of districts.
Thirty-seven.
And I've seen it work, so it's something for us to, to look at.
Excellent.
Um, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Mohammed, this is Zeps.
I've got several, so I'll try and be quick. Um, where I need some help with understanding is when the children take the SOL test, aren't they retaking the test? If, if they don't pass it, they're retaking it. And so these scores are indicative of children who had how many opportunities to retake this test?
Uh, the students can take the test twice if they qualify for it, so they have to make a score between a three, seventy-five, or higher in order to take the test twice, and not every student that fails gets that, gets that opportunity.
So why is that? Why?
That's a state, that's a Virginia rule.
That's a Virginia rule, okay. Okay, okay, um. And so, how do we, how are we accounting for the students now being placed on? Well, no, my thing is, for how long will we put children on the incorrect pathway?
While we can't speak to that, that was something that we resolved as soon as we were aware that it was happening. So I, I don't know when that practice came into play in the school division or what the rationale was at that time. Um, what we have found in some other scenarios, and again, I can't speak to this one with specificity, is that over time, sometimes the state policies have changed and the division has been slow to catch up. Um, but that was something that we all saw and immediately took action on. So that wasn't, uh, anything that we allowed to linger or look at over the course of the year or make any decisions about. We knew that those students needed to be in Algebra for the reasons that you've heard my colleagues say as we stood before you this evening.
And so we, we just caught that last year.
When we've gone through, Mrs. Zeps, uh, we've only had two full years, most of those people weren't even around. So, last year was the year we made the change, and so we only had one full year to see it. Because even I walked in in the middle of January, kids are already in. Although, we go through a year, we see it, start making corrections, and we continue. Find things that we correct either, like you said, things have changed, and we got to expedite the process. But you also know that the system has struggled when it hit recession, it was gunned, the COVID cuts, limited staff, limited resources. So, that probably could have slowed the transition to make the changes also. But we got to speak to it one year, and then we made correction, but we found that we're going through a full year.
But we're, we're on the right path now.
Yeah, absolutely.
We find additional stuff, we will like the tweaks to World History.
Okay.
And we get it in the right sequence, and then we also find that you don't have to take them sequentially. So we know that one is more of interest for finding the children, so we're saying to students, they don't have to take them in sequence. World History One, they're telling me is, well, World History One is probably not very exciting. Don't you worry, we're searching World History Two. The students can put them in that one first because it's not a prerequisite that World History One.
Okay. That, that I appreciated hearing that, um. Students with disabilities, what, what percentage, or did you say that I didn't hear, of those students are not passing these SOLs, and are they taking an alternative SOL?
Well, many of the students, they take the SOL test with accommodations. I don't have that data for you today, but I can get it prepared and send it out to you all. But, um, our special name students typically take the SOL test with accommodations.
Okay, with the accommodations.
With the accommodations, if they qualify.
If they qualify. They gotta qualify.
Yes.
Okay. Um, I'm good with that, I think I'm good with that, um. What does reconstitute mean?
Reconstitute is, um, we have to go out and application every year for schools who could be facing being denied. And if they had some kind of reconstitution and they're building a new program or a new staffing, or have the employees got, um, or they had to have a new staff reassignment, then they can qualify for reconstitution. It's.
That's the type of that, MLK? That, that was MLK?
Yeah, MLK, you have.
Benford, Los Elfer.
Benford, and so we, when you see those applications going. So, we, when you see those applications going to your heart about, that's us submitting paperwork, asking the state to review to see if it would be considered as a way to consider. And sometimes they say they're gonna recommend a go-forward. Other times they say we don't think it's enough. And then we have to decide whether we're going to contest it or not. You didn't make the mark, and they don't see it, then we just take the rating and we withdraw. So, you don't see us submitting for review and then see what, you know, which way it may fall. They may indicate what they're gonna recommend, and then wait to see the state what proves VDOE's recommendation. So, we don't always go contest, because sometimes it's just not the perfect thing to do. We forward the correct action plan.
Okay.
And one of the reasons you got presentation last week with the SPP describing it was mid-year, if you remember, we said, we had concerns mid-year. That's why we started this plan with changing the format of how we do our school plans for approval. This is another reason also we're saying that we're asking for a Division Level Review part, because the number of schools that were already in pipe now before we got there already slated. So, unless we hit the mark, then we're gonna be facing denied. And we just don't have the resources to do it school by school, it's just too many of them.
Okay, so, I wanna expand on that then. Using Get Your Park as an example.
And we'll use it, 'cause it's an easy one to...
If the state comes back and says you're denied, do we have those four options? Either replace the principal?
No, that's different. That will, if you fall in the lowest five percent.
Okay, so that's something else?
That's something different.
Okay.
They will come in and have this very specific plan of action that you must agree to for those schools that you must take. And we're saying, we're gonna go that route with these middle schools. We don't have the personnel to do the type of work. That means that's systemic, and we need to address. And then tweak parts of it to support individual schooling, and they have nuances that are different, but we need to address.
Okay. So, did Get Your Park have an improvement? A school improvement part? A lead turnaround part? Okay, that's that.
Sorry, that's another...
Okay. So, my final one would be, based on these SOL scores and the trend that's been happening with rich public schools over the years and this decline, first let me say that I really would like for us to start to speak with a level of hope for these children. When I hear the conversation, it's as if, and I know, I don't believe that it's intentional, but what I hear is almost like an excuse for us not being there. And I'd like to hear us say, we know what it is, but we know we're gonna do it. We know we can overcome this if we will. So, saying that, how close are we to, with having our schools not accredited, to the state come in? Are we in a position where if we don't move these scores for next year, would the state come in and say, our PS will take it all?
I wouldn't categorize it taking all. I think one of the options is, they could come in even if we don't request it and say they're gonna do the Division Level Review because of us, regardless of what we say. That's one thing they could do.
That's, so, and so, this Division Level Review, when I did, I did a little research on it, are we in a status where it is going to be required? It's, I hear you saying we're volunteering for it, but when I look at these guidelines, it looks like it's gonna be required.
I remember what I said to you last, when we did it. We asked for this consideration almost a year, August twenty fifteen, because we saw the challenges with the number of students. All I can say to you is that we don't make a decision for them, but there's enough here that they could actually say, whether we ask for it or not, that they want to come in and do it the way the range of ready. Whether we ask for it or not, they could say, we're gonna do it anyway, because you've met all these requirements. Do they prefer to be collaborative? Absolutely. We believe we need it, that's why we asked for it before we got here. We had a bear year last year. We saw the agreements, we grew up, everybody excited. We still thought it was the right thing to do then because of capacity issues. So, I want people to think that we're saying, oh my God, the sky's falling. No, we asked for this even at the year.
So, if, for instance, the state decides they're gonna come in, because I thought I understood that you said that they were working on this, they're working on the tool?
No, they had a tool.
They have a tool.
They're creating a new tool that they believe is better. They've always had a Division Level Review in the language. Only thing in this past year legislation is change wording and make changes to it. And I'm working with William and Mary, Dr. Strong, the Heritage Professor, Leadership Policy, to make it focus on those five core areas. So, we could potentially be the first district to go through that process in the new Florida. As of today, I was told that they, when I asked for the update on what I shared with you previously, other than the notes that you have there, they don't. They said he's still working on his portion, that it may not be early, it may be November, and they would, you know...
But they could still use the old tool?
I don't think they're gonna use anybody's old tool anymore, period. I think they're going through this new tool, period. Just that they didn't have it done, that they could share with us and give you more, here's the document, here's what it looks like. Like, I could show you the old document, but it'll probably confuse you, because it may not look the same.
Okay.
So, they just leave that one alone.
I kinda wanna go back and make sure we're clear, maybe takeover isn't the word. But when we think about our sister school system, Petersburg, and how they ended up with the state coming in, are we in a situation near that?
The answer is just what Dr. Ben Melbry said. I mean, they could do that now, but that's not the mindset. They wanna be collaborative, as do we.
I mean...
Could, sure they could, but we're not there.
I think you're missing my question. Based on this information that you all have provided, that has been provided to us today, what is the standard that VDOE uses that they would come in and say, we need to run your system?
That is the language that I gave you.
What I'm saying is, are we there? Could they just come knock on the door and say, hey, y'all?
Well, they could. The word is could, the language is what I showed you last week.
Could they do it based on a timeframe? Could they do it based on these scores? Could we look up in December and the state says, RPS, starting January, we're gonna run your system?
Well, first of all, they don't do it just like that. So, that's the difficulty. They don't come and say, we're gonna run your system. If you look at Petersburg or any other district, there's only two that they're involved. They come in and put parameters on how you function, but they don't run it like the way you're saying. They may say they wanna have someone who provides oversight and checks and balance, is what they do. That they will say, for instance, in one of the districts, when they go to select a new superintendent, the state has to review it before the board can pick the superintendent. As an example, one of the agreements, before you spend certain dollars, they review it and sign off on it. So, they don't run it, they put, like I'm gonna turn it on-site and on...
Are we there? Are we there?
That's something that has...
While I know they could do, do we meet the criteria?
You meant the requirement a year ago. We meant it a year ago. If you look at the language, the language is such that what you see on there, it could be done. They could decide when they decide to do that.
Okay. Good.
But we were making progress.
Yeah, of course. Oh, Tommy, step up, Mr. Washington, let's just step up. I've been here eight years, and I really appreciate your comments about this, Epps. You know, we need to be, be hopeful about our kids. This was, this is the best presentation I've seen on the SOL. Understandable, grabs. Thank you so much. All right, great, great. No, I would tell him to step up, 'cause I'm gonna say something else. I actually, though, felt differently than Ms. Epps, just by the way you guys stood up as a team together. I felt real hopeful that you are serious about working at this, seeing people standing up for one another, that this is where this goes, this is where... I'm encouraged, but I won't be there. That's the reality. And so, I'm hoping that you all will be to follow through on what you, I feel like, did a great presentation. But the follow-through is, whether or not it's the wrong. We get to the point where we can't say, I wasn't here when that, you know, I heard that. Our kids can't let us adults care. So, I'm hoping you stay here. So, whatever results start coming out, it'll be great results if you can say, hey, I was here when it's bad. Okay, turn the person aside, will you please say? Tell her hello. Thank you very much. Oh, Miss Lola, who's far side?
I just wanna echo what Mr. Coleman's saying, and I thank you for those. And I like the colors on the graph, on the barcode, because it is easy to read. And what I also was hearing from you as you were presenting kind of reminded me, I think, when we first started on the board, or maybe right before, when there was a change in leadership, the curriculum wasn't aligned with the SOLs. And we went through a massive change, and it was a huge undertaking. And this kinda feels like the second wave of that. So, you know, now we're going back and we're figuring out where we place children. And maybe it wasn't the right place. And we wanna make sure that when they leave here, I mean, we hear stories all the time, you know, so-and-so went on to college, maybe did group mediation their whole freshman year. And what I hear from you all is you're trying to go back to fix that, and that's not easy work. And it takes time. So, I appreciate you doing that, because I think in the end, our system's gonna be stronger and our children are gonna be better prepared, but it's tough work. So, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, Stu, are you, wanna hang with us, or are you ready to leave? All right, great. Madam Clerk?
The next item is four point zero three, discuss the two thousand seventeen legislative package.
Like, Chairman is not here tonight, and I didn't have an opportunity to connect with him, 'cause he wasn't feeling well. We'll have to move that through the next agenda.
The next item is four point zero four, receive report from board members attending the NSBA conference.
Thank you all. I'm Mamie Taylor, the fifth district school board representative. And I really wish that our colleague, Mr. Born, was here, because based on the policy that he presented as to board members presenting on their professional development, he sent me a copy of the policy. And within that same policy, in fact, the very same paragraph, the first sentence in that policy, it reads that all board members are to receive professional development annually. And I can speak to only about four board members have honored that portion of the policy. Ms. Pinkney, Ms. Shonda Harris Muhammad, Mr. Don Coleman, and myself have received annual professional development and joint presentations. So, there seems to be some intentionality as to continuous placement of myself on the agenda when I've already made it very clear that I would like to have an ample amount of time to prepare. This is a request for me to present on the NSBA conference, which was held back in March of this year. This is a very busy time of year, and to give me four days to prepare for such a presentation is a level of intentionality that I don't appreciate. So, I will, in that case, wait until our illustrious colleague is back and feeling better, and we can discuss this topic that we have discussed ad nauseam. To please give me ample notice and consent, get my consent prior to placing me on the agenda. I actually requested several things to be placed on the agenda, to include school uniforms and the like, and those things have not come before us as of yet. So, to place this is a level of intentionality, again, that I don't appreciate. So, I will remove myself from presenting, and I will wait until our colleague is able to discuss this, and then we'll move from there. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Taylor.
Mr. Coleman, before you move away.
Again, we have one specific topic.
Yes.
Okay.
When we think about presentations, I just went to the head start policy council retreat this weekend. I'm ready to place them.
Okay, great, thank you. Do you really note that, Madam Clerk, that... Okay? Next item?
The next item is item five, legislature item five point zero one, receive the financial statement for the month ended September thirtieth, twenty sixteen.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Just a brief update about our financial statement. For the month ended September thirtieth, revenues and expenditures continued to improve as we anticipated. As you know, September only reflects one active month for the teachers being back. We are, just as a sidebar, approaching the end of our fiscal sixteen audit period. We're pleased with our progress there, we've made a lot of progress with the city. We're happy that our relationship with the city administration seems to be in pretty good shape. We do still have, in the current year, though, something that we hope with some of the stopgap measures we put in place, particularly the salary scale enhancements that the board approved, we'd like to see that some more of our full-time positions are staffed, and we don't continue to have the non-contractual dollars being spent. Obviously, they didn't move those dollars out of salary, because we anticipate filling those positions up going forward. With that, I don't really have much of a further update, because it's so early in the year, but I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions for my... All right, sir, thank you. Madam Clerk?
The next item is six, of your board action items, six point zero one, receive for action to recommend a request for a Division Level Review.
That is correct, thank you so much, Mrs. Martin.
I move that we accept the recommendation for a request for a Division Level Review.
Moved in the property second? Is there any discussion? Ms. Epps?
I would definitely like to add, and I appreciate that we're volunteering, although they should've did this with fewer year ago, based on what our SOL scores are looking like. My concern is that we, the Virginia Department of Education, the last time they came and presented to us, were not willing to answer any questions. So, can we at least put in the caveat that if they do this review, when they do the presentation, they will make themselves available for questions?
So, my comment to that is, I'm not sure that Division Level Review is something mandated by state code. And I'm not sure it requires them to come present other than to provide you with the findings of their document. So, that's the first thing that you wanna consider. Secondly, I think I shared with the board members, specifically on individual calls, why they did not present and speak. And they did something they normally don't do. They don't come to school divisions and do what they did for us on that day. They did that out of collaboration and request. They don't not send their administrative staff to come speak before other schools, because their job is to report to their school. And they absolutely did not want to have a situation where there was an exchange back and forth that could become inappropriate back and forth. Thus, why our staff was asked to answer questions, and if they couldn't, they would assist them in answering the questions.
I don't, I don't buy that. Again, it speaks to predetermination that somebody was gonna ask them something inappropriate. It just, it's difficult to receive information and then not be able to question the individual. It's just, it's difficult to receive information and then not be able to question the individual that gave you the information. As I look through, but you say they're revising the whole tool. And then, I guess, how will this review be helpful for the right here and now, if we've got to wait for future time for them to come in and do it?
Again, as I said earlier, they anticipate having the tools in April, November. If they start the review, I suspect it will probably happen in December or January, when they begin to do the review. In the notes, I think on the board docs, it says probably six to eight weeks to do the review. So it would inform stuff for the next school year. And given that we have not updated or revised your strategic plan in the district, the AIP is piecemeal based on the funding that we have received, so we modify it. I think having a focused plan that becomes a comprehensive plan, as the language says, that also then will help focus the resources from the feds and the state that we receive, which would be a combination of receiving money, any other federal funds. The review is no cost in the district. They do it at no cost, they absorb all the costs to do it. And I think this board has shown a willingness to say, "We welcome all the people looking at us and seeing how we're doing, or not doing, and what we need to work on." I also think it would actually provide some very clear, specific expectations of things that need to be worked on, and what the outcome should be. So that would be very helpful, I would believe.
Any other discussion?
My concern about adding something to it about DOE asking questions is that we cannot force DOE to do anything. We are making a request that they do a division level review, and we're doing that in collaboration with them, and then they're going to share the findings with us. We don't know the specifics about how that information's going to be presented. My hope is that we receive the information in time for the budget season, something that I mentioned last time we discussed this, so that if there's any cost associated with recommendations that they're making, that it can be folded into that process. So the important thing that I see in this is that we expedite the request, so that we get the information back before budget process. And hope that it's a collaboration, and that we're able to dialogue. But I wouldn't want to not move forward because of the nuances of the language.
Any other discussion?
Will they be able to get this information to us back before budget? We're in budget discussions now. Will they be able to get it back such that in your superintendent's estimate of needs, we would be able to include any dollars?
The same answer I gave before, it doesn't change. It could start in December, it could start in January, four, six weeks, I understand.
I'm sorry, Mr. Vice Chairman, this is my turn. The key is when they start. I think the leadership can submit the request, and Dr. Bennett can correct me if I'm wrong. We can submit the request, but they may not review the request until the middle, end of November. It's their timeframe, that's the only challenge with this, getting this in. I am very hopeful that it will be in before the end of our budget cycle, that we're in right now. But I don't foresee it to be very, professionally honest, I don't see it coming in before December 1st.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Any other discussion? Ms. Taylor?
Thank you. I just wanted to add that I hear this Larson's statement that we can't tell the VDOE what to do. But I think if we're actually working with a spirit of collaboration and cooperation, and you can clearly see that there are three board members over here who are making the request to at least put in the ask, I think that at the very least, you can present that we don't want to have something similar to the discussion about special education, and that we would very much like it to be placed on the table as an option to have a discussion about what the results of their findings are. So if you or Mr. Bourne or Dr. Bennett can at least say that that's something that the board desires, then at least put it on the table and let them tell us now. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Taylor. Any other discussion?
Yes, I just, you know, I appreciate Ms. Taylor, thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. If they would not receive dialogue from us as a board member, I would like to receive it from somebody on the leadership team. So to explain, because we don't normally see those type of reviews, so we can't assume that each of us are going to know what the review entails. So if someone can walk us through line item by line, because there's a lot of information there, okay? And depends on, you know, what they release to us. We're really going to have to have a walkthrough, and I think that's beneficial for all of us.
Mr. Chairman, I was sure I don't have a reasonable reason, but if you have requests that we can't inquire about what's the presentation format and tell you all typically how they present. So ask, I'm just saying, we can't. It could be that they will come and do the same thing, that they're going to present information to you and their findings, and they may or may not take questions, I don't know, but I don't want to ask them that question.
Okay.
So I can actually do that. What is the delivery format of your report? Does someone come out and do the report? So I can ask that question, and if you have a response, put it in the window, or if you don't, we'll take the response.
Oh, thank you very much, Mr. Superintendent. All righty, any more discussion? All right. Call the question?
Call the question. You're asking, Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Call the question.
No more discussion, no more disagreement in that? Thank you, Madam Clerk.
The motion is ready, Mr. Harris Coleman, and seconded, I'm afraid to accept the request for division level review, Ms. Gray.
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
And Mrs. Pinkney-As?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Motion passes six point zero. The next item is six point zero two, receive for action, human resources actions.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Chairman, Dr. Bennett and board members. The H R actions we approve for this evening are the nomination of seventeen employees, the change of contract of forty-eight employees, and the transfer of ten employees.
There are any questions that need to be probably closed?
I move the review of the H R.
Second.
Oh, there is a question closed. Okay, thank you, Ms. Evans.
So do we withdraw the motion, or do we throw it out?
No, that was my mistake, she had her hand up before, before you guys made the motion. Okay, Madam Clerk?
The next item is six point zero three, receive for action, school board travel and district activity request. I only have one request this evening, and that is for Mrs. Harris Mohammed to attend the V SBA conference, Ann Williamsburg, the annual conference.
So move.
So move in second, any discussion? Madam Clerk?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the second, I also thank you. Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinkney-As?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Motion passes six point zero. The next item is six point zero four, receive for action, budget transfers.
Good evening, and Mr. Chairman, members of the board. There are no budget transfers before you tonight that require your approval. All of these are under your threshold, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions if you have.
There is one.
Sorry, you may have one that I don't have. Oh, I'm sorry, there is, I didn't know this was on for me. There is one, I apologize. It's a transfer to pay for school board legal services. And this actually gives a good opportunity to share with the board what we are doing this year, which is a little bit different. Since we're early in the year, we are making some budget transfers. We're going to incorporate those into next year's budget, so we won't have to make budget transfers so early on in the year. This transfer is for fourteen thousand ninety-one dollars and fifty cents. It's a transfer out of reserve for contingencies to pay for school board legal services. School board legal services. Yes, please. Thank you.
There was one for me.
There's a question.
Question?
Yes. You just kind of touched on it a little bit, Mr. Myers. I'm concerned that this early in the year, we're moving money around now, and we're moving it from categories into staff development. We didn't know in advance that we were going to do staff development. And, I mean, you know, why wasn't that budget for? Because that's kind of like one of those standing things that we do. And we're moving it out of materials and supplies. And so then what's going to happen after, in a year, when we need that money for materials and supply?
Yes, Ma'am, that's a good question, that's what I was attempting to address, is that we're going to bring those transfers to the schools and department budget holders about making these transfers so early on in the year. And do we need to adjust some of those budgets, so those dollars are available? So, no, we shouldn't have transfers this early in the year for what would be relatively common recurring items like professional development.
So I recall the last meeting, you were talking about how you were going to go meet with the departments and talk about their budgets. Will there be an opportunity for the board to see that breakdown of the budget prior to it being made part of the superintendent's statement of needs? So for instance, are you talking to the principals, and they have been given an opportunity to put forward a budget, could we get access to that?
Of course you can.
All right, is there a motion? All right, questions, Taylor?
Thank you. In regard to the fourteen thousand seventy-one dollars and fifty cents for to pay sales and use legal fees associated with third-party compliance, what's the timeline for those services? What's the actual date of those services?
I don't know when those services were rendered. I'll have to find, I'll have to give the legal bill and let you know.
Is this the total amount, does due them in the totality?
And I don't know that either, I apologize.
Is it the most recent services that Sands Anderson has provided us?
If it's okay, Ms. Taylor, I will try to get some complete information about this particular issue and make sure that the board has access to that.
Okay, and the reason why I'm asking, because from the last services that were provided, that conversation ended so abruptly due to chaos that was going on. And I don't feel like that was resolved, so I'm wondering, are we in essence paying services before we concluded that the work has been done?
I certainly don't want to answer anything inappropriate. So we'll get our attorney and see if she recommends that I have any other answer, then we'll get you complete information about this, and make sure that the board has whatever this particular legal issue is.
Okay, I was just wondering if that's the case, and could we possibly delay this transfer until we have answers on those questions?
I can't speak specifically to this, but if an invoice was given, then there are certain deadlines that have to be met in order to have, not paying the other services. So work was done, an invoice was given, most likely. I haven't seen the invoice, so, you know, I can't speak to the specifics. But board discussions of that result do not factor into this at all.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we delay the transfer of this until the next meeting.
Second.
To address the specific item, we're not talking about all the bunch of transfers, right? Or this one, right? Any discussion? This is...
Mr. Coleman, this, the document seems to be signed, the date of signature, October the 3rd. So I'd like to think that possibly we are within that thirty-day window, and we could defer this to our next meeting.
Okay, hold on one second here. Okay, Ms., thank you, Ms. Evans Gray.
I just want to remind everyone here that we are under state public procurement laws, and we are guided by the Pay Act. And even though the invoice may not be without, outside of thirty days, by the time we get the payment made, after the board approves it, we could be outside of state law compliance. So I cannot vote tonight to not abide by state law and promptly pay a bill that we have procured through our process. So I am strong objection to not paying our bills that we've already obligated ourselves to pay.
Mr. Chairman?
Follow-up, Mr. Coleman, I appreciate that information, but we don't even know when we got the invoice. So can somebody at least tell us when we received the invoice?
Okay, Dr. Bennett.
You have the date, you have the date. We've done the second request for payment on this. So, Ms. Lyler, you remember around a long time that sent a report? But we could be coming up close to it, I know at least halfway there since the first invoice just a couple of weeks ago, and then, maybe three.
You're saying we received possibly three invoices on this?
I said weeks, you see, possibly two to three weeks ago.
Okay.
Was the first invoice said, this service was through a procurement process. This is an approved RFP process that this company was engaged, and it's a legitimate service. The movement, if you remember, because when we cut and reduced the budget, we had money in that line item, but that was part of the budget.
So we took that fifty thousand dollars away?
Correct, that the line item does not exist in balance in the budget. So that's why we're in this book.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Bennett. More discussion? Ms. Gray?
Just one note, the transfer request came through on September 28th. So we would be beyond thirty days when this request... And imagine that the professional services, because it is fourteen thousand ninety-one dollars and fifty cents is an exact amount to match that invoice, that the invoice had to come, have come prior to September 28th. So we would be out of compliance with state laws if we go to our next meeting to vote to approve this transfer.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Gray. Ms. Taylor?
I just want to just add on that we don't know what the date of the invoice. We don't know if this is the total amount that we're actually paying out in services. If Ms. Gray Coltrane is referencing the 28th of September, we didn't even clue... If this is the... If this is, if this is the, for the services that I think it's about, we had a discussion about this in October during our last board meeting in close that was ended abruptly because of chaos. So that twenty-eighth date of September, and we hadn't even concluded the discussion about the services, that was in October, it just doesn't match up. I would like to have information before I agree to...
Okay, hold on one second. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Mr. Myers has agreed to give information. Ms. Attorney Lyler, what would you like to...
I was just going to reiterate that services rendered are not, the result and the discussion of that result, as I said, does not have any bearing on the invoice for services. So the services, as I'm speaking, the services were rendered regardless of the result and regardless of the board's discussion of that result. And so the invoice would stand...
If we only knew the date it was, but we don't know where the date is.
I'm suggesting that the services were rendered so that the discussion of the date really... I mean, if you're going to talk about not paying it, the services were rendered. That's what I'm saying. It has no bearing, the date has no bearing to speak on whether or not you're going to ultimately end up paying the fourteen thousand ninety-one dollars and fifty cents because the services were rendered.
But how accurately is my concern?
As I said, the findings and your opinion of the findings has no bearing on the result of, on the amount of legal fees that are amassed during an investigation.
To me, it's more about transparency and spending tax dollars that people could be tricky, so that's my concern, transparency.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Ms. Evans?
Just a follow-up. When I look through our budget transfers, the ones that we're not voting on, in particular, I'd like to use an example, as an example. There was a five hundred dollar transfer from the seventh district to the sixth district. That was to purchase school supplies back in August. And according to these documents, it wasn't approved until like September the twenty-second, and we've got a final signature of ten twelve, so that that doesn't apply internally to us? The same process doesn't apply internally as it does with this third-party vendor?
That process is just an internal transfer of funds from one of you all to another one of you all, and the paperwork had been submitted, but we had to resubmit it, and so that's why the date is there. The dates are different, but it was approved at a board meeting, and that's not a transfer that has to be approved, that it's just an internal tracking of the three.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Question for attorney. So is this motion...
It's a viable motion, and you can either move it up or down.
Okay, thank you very much. Any more discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk?
Motion is made by Mrs. Taylor, seconded by Ms. Pinkney Epps, to defer approval of budget transfers. Ms. Gray?
No.
Mrs. Larson?
No.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris Mohammed?
I'm sorry, it's just this one.
No.
Mrs. Pinkney Epps?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
No.
Motion passes four two.
I move that we approve the budget transfer. Second.
Moved in second? Yeah, we have to approve. Alright, okay.
Four two.
Okay, moved in second, approved.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor? Mrs. Harris?
No.
Yes.
Mrs. Pinkney Epps?
No.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Motion passes six two.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
I'm sorry, four two. Thank you, Ms. Gray. The next item is your consent agenda, and under the consent agenda's approval of the minutes of the October third, two thousand and sixteen meeting, and to affirm the list of two thousand and sixteen and summer two thousand and sixteen schedules.
Point of clarification, I didn't understand that.
Your consent agenda, there's two items under their approval, the minutes...